Our regular city council meeting will now come to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Put your mics on.
And make sure everyone turn on their mics.
Turn your mics on, everyone. Wadsworth.
Good evening, city council members. Mayor McCray, two of our three treasurers, Stacy Page, our deputy clerk, our chief of staff, our city attorney, and administrative staff and audience, and also greetings to those who are viewing tonight's meeting via the broadcast channel or the YouTube Live. Welcome to the City of Romulus City Council Regular Meeting, and today's date is Monday, March 7, 2022. Members of the public wishing to participate in this meeting may do so under the public comment portion of the agenda. Please fill out a request to speak public comment card located on the back table in the back of the chambers and hand it to the deputy clerk. Additionally, members of the public who are viewing tonight's meeting via our broadcast channel or YouTube Live can submit their comments to publiccomment@romulusgov.com. At this time, we will have roll call. Councilwoman Abdo.
Here.
Councilman Barton.
Here.
Councilwoman Roscoe.
Here.
Councilwoman Tally.
Here.
Councilman Wadsworth.
Here.
And we see that Councilwoman Webb is absent. And Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a quorum.
Thank you.
Tonight's regular council meeting agenda is as follows. Number one, agenda. Number two, minutes. Number three, petitioner. Number four, chairperson's report. Number five, mayor's report. Six, clerk's report. Seven, treasurer's report. Eight, public comment. Nine, unfinished business. Ten, new business. Eleven, communication. And number twelve is adjournment. And a motion would be in order to accept the regular council meeting agenda as presented.
So move to accept the agenda as presented.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Tally, supported by Mr. Wadsworth, for approval of the agenda as presented. Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair both yes. Motion approved.
Number two are the minutes. Agenda item 2A. For approval are the minutes from the regular meeting held on Monday, February 28, 2022 at 7:30 PM.
So move for approval of the minutes held at the regular meeting held on Monday, February 28.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Abdo, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the minutes from our regular meeting held on Monday, February 28 at 7:30 PM. Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Abstain.
Chair both yes. Motion approved.
There were no special meetings held on Monday, February 28, 2022. There were no petitioners listed on the agenda this evening. Number four, chairperson's report.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Tonight, we had a 6:45 PM open session with our treasurer, Stacy Page, who presented a quarterly investment report. Thank you, Ms. Page. Other than that, the chair has no report tonight.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to accept your report.
Support.
Been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for approval of the chairperson's report. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair both yes. Motion approved. Thank you.
Number five is the mayor's report.
Thank you. Good evening, city council, madam treasurer, madam clerk, deputy clerk. Nothing in my report for actual items tonight. Just one thing I would do is congratulations to our Romulus High School Ladies Eagles basketball team. I've been able to attend a couple of their games, and they brought home a district championship to Romulus, something positive to root for. Very inspiring, and I've been able to go to a couple of their games and watch them play. Those young ladies wear me out watching them. Nothing but hustle and a dud. And Coach Paris McCarthy, shout out to her, she's done a great job coaching those young ladies up. So hopefully they'll keep that run going, but so far districts are headed to the next game. So that, and then also, just to update, we've been getting a lot of complaints since that time of year for the roads and the conditions, the road patching. Cruises are out, and we know the conditions of them, and that warm-up we had for a few days pushed a lot of the patch out. So we're out there working on those. Roberto did have the crews come in on Saturday, an all-hands-on-deck patch effort to make sure they get in all the areas in the city. So if you have an area we didn't hit, please call the DPW. Facebook and social media is usually not a good place. You're going to get better results if you call them directly. We'll put you on the list and make sure our teams get out there. And also, while we're talking about roads, several meetings lately with community leaders in the area, anywhere from the governor down to Huron, to county officials, the airport. We've been trying to be with everybody and have a joint effort, and we've had a couple of good meetings so far. Hopefully, we'll get some momentum going. We want to look at some solutions and tap into that grant funding that's out there, some federal dollars, and fix our infrastructure. So stay tuned on that. Hopefully, these meetings we've been having bear some fruit, and we'll let you know as they go. But so far, we've met with everybody, like I said, from the governor to the county exec's office, all the way down to Huron and the airport, and everybody seems to be rolling in the right direction, and they understand what a big issue it is for specifically Eureka Road being a failed road system, and also Meriman. It's the entranceway into the airport, and it's most people's gateway to Michigan. It's the first thing they see is our road structure. So hopefully, we get some more leverage with all these combined voices, and we'll keep trying to work to get some good results. So that's all I have for my report.
All right, thank you.
Number six is the clerk's report, and I have two action items.
You have something to say?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yes, I've got three taxes, and they have, each one of them has said that there's no sound on the TV.
No sound?
So they're not being able to hear.
Who's downstairs?
Okay, we'll send a message down to see if they can work that out. Thank you. 6A, this is a request to amend the 2021-2022 fee schedule for building and, for the Building and Safety Department. At the May 10, 2021, regular meeting, council approved the 2021-2022 fee schedule by resolution number 21-142. The Building and Safety Department seeks council approval to amend their fee schedule to include a license referral fee of $300 for inspections under the licensing requirements of Chapter 28, Article 2, Section 28-87 of the City Code of Ordinance. Therefore, I am requesting approval to amend the 2021-2022 fee schedule to accommodate the license referral fee for the Building and Safety Department.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Bill.
If I may, I will move that we amend the 2021-22 fee schedule for the Building and Safety Department.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wadsworth, supported by Ms. Abdo. Request to amend the 2021-22 fee schedule in the Building and Safety Department. Any discussion? Ms. Williams?
So I'm trying to understand the process of this. So in May of last year, we were presented the fee schedule, and this wasn't included. So what came about to include this, to amend this?
So Councilwoman Williams, so that it can, kind of a cost recovery, because the building department, you know, they're kind of short-staffed, and they're out trying to meet the requirements of the ordinance for these inspections, and so this is just the cost recovery of what it's going to cost for, to have someone specifically go out and conduct these inspections. So it wasn't on the fee schedule last year, so that's why this, the current fee schedule that we're in, we need to include that so that they can go out and conduct their inspections. So it's a cost recovery for those inspectors to go out and do the building inspector, the building inspections.
I mean, I was just looking at it. So I'm trying to understand, so is it hotels? Is it for landlords? You know?
Specifically, right now, for our hotels, because it requires a lot of, you know, with the inspection, so that we can stay current and comply with our ordinance and stay up to date, because before I can issue their business license, they have to have their inspection. So, you know, with everything going up and kind of short-staffed here, and this will kind of cover that cost so that we can get someone in here. You can't just have anybody go out and conduct those inspections. So that's why we wanted to add it now, so the guys can go out there and conduct these inspections.
I was just wondering, anytime you do ordinance change or fee increase, shouldn't it have came to council for us to discuss it before, or this is just a process?
This is, I mean, this is just a process. I mean, and we're going to, and like I said, this is for the current fee schedule, not the one that's coming up, you know, for, with our budget, which will be included with the budget with the 22-23. But in order for, again, in order for them to get started, you know, with these inspections and to get, you know, and stay caught up, because it's a lot, there's a, there's a cost, there's a need, and so we met and said, you know, in order to fund this, it's kind of self-funding, basically, cost recovery for the time it takes to go out and conduct these inspections. And right now, specifically, this is for the hotel.
This is just for the hotels?
This one is for the hotels.
Yeah, but it has hotels, it has apartments, you know, there's so much.
Well, right, housing. The ordinance, I don't have it in front of me, Section 28 of the ordinance, it addresses housing, hotels, apartments, extended living facilities. So it is, you know, I can't speak to, I don't know all that they do. I mean, perhaps the mayor can kind of elaborate a little bit more with, you know, what it requires to conduct these inspections.
Well, I mean, I understand some of the things, you know, because I've had home inspections. I'm just concerned that, what was the fee before?
There wasn't a fee.
It wasn't a fee before?
No, no. So, but in order to, again, to meet the requirements for this, for the ordinance, dealing with apartments, houses, hotels, that it's requiring, because they're a little short-staffed, and so manpower in order to get out there, and, you know, we got, we have a lot. We have 25 hotels that have to be inspected.
Right.
So, right.
I just don't agree because we are short-staffed that we should come up with a figure, I mean, who came up with the figure of 300? And is this a one-time?
Through the chair.
Yes, ma'am, mayor.
If you'd like to comment on that, yeah, this is an added layer of inspections that our building department will be taking care of to look at these hotels and make sure they're compliant for the license referral. And we didn't feel that it was proper to, for that burden or that cost to fall on the taxpayers. That should be on the hotels who are causing the need for the license referral. So this is just to cover the administrative time and the inspection time for our guys going on the field, inspecting the common areas, some room checks, pool areas, and make sure they're all safe, up to code, and making sure that the city's not going to incur those costs. It's going to be incumbent on the hotel owners to pay those costs and reimburse the city for the service we're rendering.
I mean, I understand, like, with the hotels, but in here it has apartment and house, so, I mean, is that for, like, a resident, you know?
Those are all existing. The only thing that we're changing here is the license referral, the one that's in red. The rest of ones that are on this page are all existing already.
They're already?
Yes.
With no fee?
With those fees that are on there, those are, those are all current. The only modification at this time is the license referral one, correct?
Correct, correct.
So is this a one-time fee, or is it every time they have to?
It'll be an annual fee. Every time the inspection is required, the hotel will have to pay the fee.
Just once a year?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. I didn't understand. I want to make sure that we wasn't taxing them out of here, but, okay. Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Tally?
I think you answered my question, ma'am, but I just want to make sure I'm clear. So these fees, my question was, is that we, these fees were being charged, but we were, it was being charged by the residents? Is that what it was? Because how were these fees captured before? Because now we're putting it as, on the fee schedule, now we're going to be charging, but how were these fees captured before, or were they captured?
They weren't. This is a new, this is a new fee. This is a new service. It's going to be provided through the clerk's office for a business license for each hotel.
Okay.
And in order to issue the business license, they're going to have to have an inspection. That way, we make sure that these hotels are kept up to standards and if things, you know, safe and looked at on a yearly basis.
So we didn't have to do these type of inspections before now?
No.
Okay, this is something new?
Right.
Okay, okay, I'm good. Thank you.
I'm studying getting texts there saying, and now it's like up to 10 people, they're saying there's no sound at all.
Wow.
I received a few of those as well.
Oh, yeah, I guess we all are receiving them. I'm not sure we'll have.
Okay, we'll drill in and ask who's going on the project downstairs.
We'll have them downstairs to work on it. Did anybody have any more questions with regards to this particular?
Any more question from council?
And again, this is for a business license, so it's not like we're going out, you know, residence. These are businesses. So in order to issue that business license for that business to conduct their business, they have to be inspected. So that's why this referral, and again, it's kind of, I think, as the mayor has stated, so that it's not on the backs of the taxpayers, so that we can kind of recoup some of those costs. It's cost recovery for what the time that it takes for them to go out and conduct all these inspections.
So I guess that's where I keep getting hung up, because we didn't have to do this with businesses before. I'm getting hung up on something, because we have businesses here, so this is a fee, and it sounds like this is a new fee.
This is a new one, and really was come about, we had a couple code issues on it, where we had some life safety issues at some of the hotels.
Okay.
And we want to implement a process. We were looking at them, making sure they're safe for occupants there, and I'm not going to say all the.
Did we do that before? I guess is my question. This is, isn't this not part of the process we've done before? Is this a new?
Right, right. This is a layer. Just to make sure they're being looked at, I know the fire department did the precursory inspections at all these properties before, now we're going to add a layer of safety to the building department, so we'll look at them as well. And typically, we found out, and I don't want to say all hotels, but some of the hotels typically have had maintenance men who are not qualified to do some code-required work and make repairs. Some of them have ended up in a substandard repair, and it could cause life safety issues. We want to make sure everybody at the hotel in our city is safe. So we're going to go out there, do the precursory inspection of the common areas, check a couple of the rooms, and make sure it's not a real in-depth, like a city certification inspection, but it's a precursory life safety inspection. We're going to go look at it. Exit lights, entryways, doors are operable, pools, spas, make sure the pool heaters are functioning right. Just make sure they haven't been changed or modified in a way that would make it unsafe.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Roscoe, and then Ms. Williams.
And just to make a comment in regards to the fee schedule as, for the hotels especially, you know, we have talked about how to take some of that burden off the city as far as the taxes and things go, because there's so much that we do there. As far as the inspections, when we do need them, and, you know, our police are always in there, our fire department's always in there, so, you know, it's only right that we are in there inspecting things, because we have businesses that have to have inspections, fire inspections, all these things throughout the course of the year, and they have to keep their licenses up. So I think it's a good move that we're putting some of this back on the hotels to compensate for having our manpower in there. Just one way to try to alleviate some of the pressure that we're under, over there in regards to the airport and, and the people coming and going and, and the businesses there.
Yes, well, I brought the question up because I wanted to make sure that, first of all, I wanted to know and be clear whether it was a one-time, only when they request an inspection? How did this come about?
So annually, we have business registrations and business licensing. So every year, that all the businesses have to register or, you know, for their registration or their business license. So there's a fee, and we will submit a, an invoice to them. We generate an invoice which goes out to the businesses for them to, you know, to stay up so that we have the current information. So, and that's what our ordinance calls for. So again, with the hotels, where is, the hotels before we, when we, when we changed from business license to business registration, so, but the hotels have to, because our ordinance calls for a licensing, which a licensing requires inspection, so we cannot issue a license unless there's been an inspection. So that's one of the things, as we look at our ordinance, as we, you know, start making sure we're doing, you know, meeting all the requirements of our ordinance. So this is something, as the mayor stated, we're adding another layer to this, to the inspections. Again, a little bit more in-depth, it was, it's not that they were not inspecting them, they were having their inspections, but now it's going to require, the ordinance is real specific as far as, you know, conducting those inspections. So that's, and then so the cost came from, you know, building and safety, they kind of incur, you know, what it's going to cost them to go out and conduct these inspections. So that's where that number came from.
Now, will they be notified that this fee will?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
So it'll be notified before the inspection, or once this is approved tonight?
So, so we, every, every year, we send out an invoice, we send out a letter, cover letter, that's directing each business, that it's their responsibility to contact our fire department and our building department for their inspections. So we made it easier so that they can call and schedule it when it's convenient, you know, for them. And so it's a process, again, it's just adding another layer, something that we always do. We notify them, they get a letter, they have 30 days to, you know, to pay, and then each department, the fire department, the building department, they're responsible for keeping up, sorry, with these inspections.
Right. I'm familiar with that, that they have to do that every year. The businesses pertaining to the hotels, I'm saying, because this is something new pertaining to the hotels. Am I correct? So are they going to get a notice in advance to let them know? Okay, thank you.
Yes, yes, they will be all notified of the fees and what, you know, what it costs the whole.
And that's before their inspection is done?
Right, it's part, it's part of the invoice that, the renewal that goes out to, to those businesses. There'll be a letter, a, an invoice again, and we're going to make sure they have a copy of the ordinance that they'll have, and then the fees.
I just wanted to make sure they.
Yeah, no, I get it, yeah.
Thank you.
We'll make sure they'll be notified of the fee, the change.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, if there's no other discussion, we'll call roll call vote. Excuse me. Mr. Wadsworth?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Chair both yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, council. The last action item, the clerk's report, for second reading and final adoption. A budget amendment 21-22-10 in the amount of $18,000. This is to cover unforeseen costs to the Wayne County Drain Assessment due to increased cost for the drain's public benefit account. This amendment was introduced at the February 28 regular meeting.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms. Roscoe.
I'll make that motion for second reading and final adoption of budget amendment 21/22-10 for the general fund.
Support.
It's been motioned by Ms. Roscoe, supported by Ms. Tally, for second reading, final adoption of budget amendment 21-22-10 for general fund. Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, roll call vote. Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Mr. Wadsworth?
I mean, yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair both yes. Motion approved.
Thank you, council. I just want to announce that they're working on the sound. We apologize that there's no sound. I think, I believe, I think saying there was a power outage, there was a power outage over the weekend, so it's kind of impacted what's going on with the audio, but Rogers on top of it and working on it. The meeting is being recorded, and then it will be aired, you know, later.
Okay.
And that way, the public can view the meeting. But again, we're sorry, as we know technology is great when it works, so.
Right.
Some things would be on our control.
All right, thank you.
Number seven is the treasurer's report.
Good evening, council, mayor, deputy clerk, chief of staff, and listening audience. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Oh, there we go. As a reminder, property taxes were due on February 28, and every year after February 28th or 29th, the taxes that are not paid are turned over to the county. So anybody that's inquiring about their real property tax, if they have any questions when it comes to balances and the fees and so forth, that the Wayne County, once it goes to the county, they would definitely need to contact the county, or I would actually recommend to go online. But at this point, you would have to pay those taxes at the county, or you can use one of the kiosks, and they do have a app on the phone where you can pay it there as well. So there's several options. You can always call our office. Our deputy treasurer, Tracy, put together a nice little sheet with all the different ways to pay your property taxes once they go to the county. So we do have that resource available to anybody that would like it. You can always contact us, we can email it to you as well. It's a nice little sheet to reference. And then for personal property tax, that does stay in-house. We're working on that now, so that's for the businesses, for the equipment that they use to run their business. Every year, it's the responsibility of that business to fill out the form that the assessor mails out, and with the equipment, and then there's a formula that she follows to assess the personal property. If you have not done that, please take the time to do it, because there is a deadline on that. And if you have any questions on that as well, you can contact the assessor's office or the treasurer's office. And as always, if you have any questions pertaining to tax, we can get you called. And that is it under my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Number eight is public comment, and this is the portion of the agenda for those in the audience who would like to address city council. The rules to address city council can be found on the back of the meeting agenda. If you would like to address city council, please raise your hand, and after being acknowledged by the chairperson, approach the podium and state your name. Please note, members of the public who submitted a public comment card will be called upon first. You will have three minutes to speak, and any additional time will be upon the consent of the chairperson. And as a reminder, members of the public viewing tonight's meeting via the city's broadcast channel or YouTube Live can submit their public comments to publiccomment@romulusgov.com before the end of the public comment period. Is there anyone from the audience that would like to?
Any comments from the audience? No comments from the audience? Madam Clerk, close that part out.
Well, we do have one.
We have one?
Comment submitted electronically.
Oh, okay.
From a resident, and I will read it into the record.
All right.
And this is coming from Tony Heimberger. "I'm sorry this meeting should have been stopped when the first text was sent that no sound is coming through our TV so we can hear this city council meeting. There is interesting things going on in our city, and we would like to hear what our mayor had to say, and this special new ordinance item that you're trying to push through. mayor had to say, and this special new ordinance item that you're trying to push through. These are the things that public need to hear about and be able to listen to." And once the first text was sent saying there's no sound going through, somebody should have stepped up to the plate and said, "Hey, here, let's fix this," but no, I see we're going to go through the whole meeting without doing anything, that is unacceptable." And again, that came from Tony Heinberger.
Any other comments? No other comments from the audience, close that part out.
All right. Number nine is unfinished business.
Any business?
Number 10 is.
Through the chair.
I'm sorry.
Just a couple items that touch base with unfinished business. A few weeks ago, we had a resident come with an issue about a sewer issue on Fourth Street. And just to let everybody know that the team is still working on it, we haven't found a solution yet, but Roberto's working with the engineers right now on that issue. And also, we had contact or communication from a resident last week about the parks, and Michael Skaska did reach out and talk to them as well. So, to be continued on that one, and I'm also, I'm sure they'll be also in touch with Conley McKay on that one. And then there was two other items that came up last week, on the gate for the new court, and also the bid for the road patch. And I did have the teams re-investigate that, look at it, make sure all the data was correct and the numbers are correct on it. So the numbers they submitted were correct, they passed through, but the staff did also, if anybody has inquiries or questions about those or process, they'll be more than happy to take some time and explain the process to you. So, everything was double-checked, and we made sure teams were cross and eyes were dotted, and it's all okay, so. That's it on unfinished business for me.
Thank you.
And again, council, this meeting will be re-aired with the audio for the residents. Takes us to number 10, new business. Number 11, communication.
Ms. Roscoe?
I have a couple things. First of all, I want to remind everyone that St. John's Lodge is having their youth day fundraiser, and it is Sunday, March 13th, and it is going to be held at the Romulus Bowling Alley Lanes, which is located at 37452 West Huron River Drive. It's $20 to bowl, it starts at 5:00. There's three games, pizza and pop, and they'll have raffles and different things. And they do a lot of good things for the youth, their back-to-school backpacks and school supplies, and just all kinds of things during the course of the year. But you can contact JW Melvin Moore at 313-285-7483 for more information. But it's a great fundraiser, they do a lot of good things for our kids. And if you don't want to bowl and can't bowl, would like to drop off a donation, I know they would greatly appreciate it. And the other thing is, Saturday, we got just a little tiny taste of what spring's going to be like. And with that being said, yard waste will start the second week in April, and it'll be April 11th, that full week, and so we'll be back to hopefully be able to get out there and clean our yards and, you know, put different things out there, especially with all this wind and everything going on, and the branches and what have you. But just a reminder that spring is just around the corner. This, we got about another week to go, and we'll have daylight savings time coming up, not this weekend, but next weekend. And that's about it. The only other thing I want to remind everyone is that, especially, there's still a lot of people at home, a lot of people still have their children at home. And the library has virtual storytime every Wednesday at 10:30 on Facebook. And practically, all the kids and adults and everything are on there, and they do that Facebook Live. So if you're looking for something to do with your children, to do yourself, tune in at 10:30 on the library Facebook page on Wednesdays. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you.
John?
Yeah, Ms. Abdo?
Thank you. I just would like to remind people that the Romulus Memorial Cemetery Board is sponsoring a Uker tournament, April 22nd, Friday, April 22nd. It will be held at the Romulus VFW post, and all the proceeds to this will go to build the veterans memorial. If you're interested, you can contact myself, or Jan Lemon, or even mayor's office, they have information on this. We are looking for donations for baskets, so if any of you are interested, please see me. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other communication? Ms. Williams?
Yes, I would just like to, behind what our mayor stated a little while ago, the information from last week was given to us to clear up the misunderstanding that I had pertaining to the warrant and the bid. So I wanted to make that clear. It was only a question that was asked, so the mayor office did clear that up, and thank you so much.
Okay. Any other?
Through the chair.
Yes, Ms. Tally?
Yeah, a couple of announcements. So, I got a flyer from our economic development coordinator, Mary Drew. There is a grant out there, the Michigan Afflicted Business Relief Grant Program, to distribute up to $409 million of its American Rescue Plan X funds to support afflicted businesses. The application opened on Tuesday, March 1st, it's going through Thursday, March 31st, and there's a website that you can go to, check into the application process, it's That's A as in apple, B as in boy, R. Or we can, you can contact our Mary Drew here at the city for further questions. We just want to encourage our local businesses out here to take advantage of these grants out here, these grants that's out here available. Just get, you got to put some time in to get the information filled out and the documents sent in. But, I mean, would it be worth it to get some relief during this time, through these times of hardship we've experienced through the pandemic? So, just want to put that out there first. Secondly, just want to continue to promote our I Love the City of Romulus contest that's coming up in May. We are taking applications right now for the best writer of Why They Love the City of Romulus. We've had the sponsor step up to sponsor the basket for this contest, it's Romulus Flowers and Gifts, located at 7563 Merriman Road, at 734-722-6440. If you want to get a sneak peek of the basket that will be presented in May for this contest, you might want to go browse that flower shop and just see what they got, because some of the items that we put in the basket will be a part of that basket we present in May. So you might want to check out Romulus Flowers and Gifts to see what kind of items that may potentially be in the basket you might can win. So please remember our Romulus got, Why I Love the Romulus, Romulus contest. And in addition to that, as we promote positivity within our city, we have a resident who's taken the initiative to issue a 30-day challenge in our city, to our community, and talk about positivity on Facebook. It was, this challenge was launched on May 1st, and it's posted on Romulus Community News Page. There are reminders every day of what you have to do and of requirements of the 30-day challenge of positivity. So please check out the Romulus Community News Page. There's a tracker, there's some rules, and you can win a $100 gift card to Romulus restaurants within the, within the city of Romulus. So please check out the Romulus Community News Page, the 30-day positivity challenge. It has all the details there for you, and it's another, again, where you can win $100 to support our local Romulus businesses. And then lastly, I would like to just start the ball rolling for our Friday, Good Friday Walk and our characters. We're going to be doing the walk on Friday, April 15th, for the Ministry Alliance. Reverend Willis is our fearless leader, and we're going to have characters on the walk that we have done in the previous years. So we are soliciting people to come out and do, participate with the walk, but also to participate in being a character. And these are characters that were surrounded around Jesus during those times before he went to the cross. So if you want to sign up, I've reached out to some folks. Thank you, Stacy Page, for answering the call. And anybody else that would like to answer that call to be a character on the Good Friday Walk, please let me know, reach out to me, and we will get you signed up. And that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tally.
Is there any other communication?
Any other? Ms. Williams?
Yes, just to remind the residents that we're still at the high school every Tuesday from 11 until normally about 2:00. All you need is your, your name, your address, and how many in the family, and we'll load you up with food. And everyone is welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Any other comments? Okay.
Number 12 is adjournment.
So moved.
Support.
It's been motioned by Mr. Wisworth, supported by, who supported that? Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Mr. Wisworth?
Yes.
Ms. Williams?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Tally?
Yes.
Ms. Abdo?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, we are adjourned. Thank you.